Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. I would like a motion to open our work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Carrie, I'd like to ask you to increase the volume, not my volume, but I can't hear very well from the stage. I can't hear the other board members very well. Okay, so we're going to begin the work session with a presentation on MS4 stormwater license requirements that have recently come down from New York State. I will hand it over to Sabrina Charny Hall, our planner, town planner, to give the presentation. Are you ready, Sabrina?
I am, thank you Supervisor. Good evening, everyone. You seem so far away. I have provided you all with some paper in front of you. You don't have to look at it right now, I'm going to refer to it here and there. I just wanted to start and give you kind of a status update. As you all know, we are considered a municipal separate storm sewer system under the New York State DEC's regulations. What we are charged to do is address stormwater that comes into our municipality and comes into our drainage system, stormwater that goes into our waterways. And really, this permit is expected to control stormwater runoff that contains pollutants. So as I've mentioned to you in our annual reports over the years, Bob Seoli and I have always talked about what stormwater is. When it rains, a drop of rain falls on the ground, it'll travel across the earth and pick up all sorts of sediment and debris and other pollution that adheres to the sediment, and it enters our waterways. It can enter our waterways by direct discharge into a stream or a water body, it can go through our storm sewer system where we have catch basins and outfalls and piping and direct directed best management practices that connect to our water bodies. New York State DEC, in January of this year, January 3rd, promulgated a new regulation that requires us to work harder to make sure our stormwater is clean. So I just want to give you all a history for a minute, because there's a trend that's been occurring where the permits are becoming more and more stringent and much more detailed. So we have been addressing stormwater in New York since the 1974 Clean Water Act. Things really began to escalate when, in 1997, the historic New York City Memorandum of Agreement to Protect New York City's Drinking Water was agreed to, particularly by 12 Westchester municipalities, another nine or another eight up in Putnam County, the county governments, the environmental community, they all signed on to this 1997 MOA, which set forth water quality protection programs for the East of Hudson watershed. The East of Hudson watershed is within our town boundary. Following the 1997 Memorandum of Agreement, New York State issued the 2008 Speedy's Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program, which really said municipalities, you need to start addressing six minimum control measures. In 2009, it was the first time the town prepared its own stormwater management plan, and that 2009 plan was reactive to the 2008 Speedy's permit requirements. After 2009, in 2010, DEC made minor revisions to the stormwater program. It didn't really require us to issue a new stormwater management plan. And then again in 2015, revisions were minor, right? We didn't really write a new stormwater management plan, rather we just edited it, amended it, changed some behaviors, did a little more education, and that was that. Since 2015, the state worked, between 2015 and 2024, to come up with the permit that we have today. And the 2017 permit that is on the screen with a star by it, the 2022 permit that's on the screen with a star by it, those are draft permits. They remain draft for a very long time, as the New York State DEC received thousands of comments on the content within those permits. As a town of Newcastle, we also submitted comments on these two permits, because they were very, very onerous for a small community to undertake, and very rigorous, given our current staffing levels and the work that we do today. Come 2024, I'm here today to kind of tell you about the permit that we're under now, it's referred to as GP024001. This is the permit that we are currently implementing, and it requires a lot more than our previous permits. There's a little delay in my forward motion. So just to give you a sense of the community, in previous stormwater discussions in the annual reports, I've always talked about all of the watersheds that come into Newcastle. They are all important, but DEC is recognizing the entire community as an MS4, and they've embraced more stringent or heightened permit conditions within the East of Hudson watershed, and that's the big blue line that really covers most likely 70% of the town. The East of Hudson watershed is considered a watershed that has a phosphorus total maximum daily load calculation. That TMDL is very important, because any watershed across New York State has to adhere to additional permit requirements. So we have our MS4 requirements as a municipality, we also have additional requirements because of the TMDL in the East of Hudson watershed. So what does it all mean? So, um, the permit still contains six minimum control measures, right? You've seen these in the annual reports, we've been living by this language since 2008, even before that. We have six minimum control measures. They're still virtually the same, although within GPO24001, the structure of the approach to undertaking each minimum control measure has changed. With public education and outreach, we have specific messaging that we need to inform the public about in the East of Hudson watershed. It has to be a phosphorus message. In the rest of the town, it will be related to the target audience, the focus of our water quality issues in the community, and what messages we need to impress upon based on the land use. Public participation and public involvement has become a little less rigorous, but it really talks about providing information for the public to react to. Every year, we've held public hearings, the planning board, the zoning board, even your board, when you have a public hearing, chances are you're talking about stormwater and the public is being given an opportunity to speak. So we're very good about involving the public. Illicit discharge detection and elimination, this has become a little more aggressive than it has previously, as is construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. These are all the six areas that are implemented by various departments in the town. So the big changes, these are significant changes. I gave you copies of the draft plan, which highlights everything that has to go in the permit. There's a separate handout I gave you, which talks about additional studies and documents and approaches that we need to take. This is just a sample. We are required to create a comprehensive, system-wide mapping and analysis program to direct our programmatic focus, right? So DEC has said, particularly if you're in the East of Hudson watershed, you need to use ArcGIS. The DEC is asking us to really look at the mapping and the data and our systems and create programmatic approaches to street sweep, to clean our catch basins, and to track down illicit discharges. So they're asking us to create a comprehensive system-wide mapping and analysis system. They're forcing us through this permit to reexamine our website and create a more user-friendly, public, education-oriented website for stormwater. Again, I'm referencing the targeted measures for the TMDL watersheds. In the East of Hudson watershed, there are specific programs like ensuring, once every five years, every homeowner who has a septic system has that septic system inspected and maintained. That is something we have never done before, it's something we are being asked to do under this permit in the East of Hudson watershed. For the first time, DEC is asking us to come up with a monitoring location and inspection sampling program. We've never done that before. They're asking us to look at our own facilities, look at where stormwater is discharging, inspect those discharge points, and to do a sampling, which requires a visual survey. It also requires in instances at what they call high priority municipal facilities, to do a wet weather sample, meaning if it's raining, you're going out there and you're taking a sample and you're filling out their survey sheet. The state DEC wants you to use their survey sheets, their inspection forms. We also, for the first time, have to inventory not only our public post-construction control practices, like our sand filters, we are being asked to track and inspect and ensure operation on private stormwater, post-stormwater control. So that's something that we have records of. Do we have all the records of? Probably not, but we will get them, and we will have to go out and communicate with the property owners, or the homeowners associations, or the businesses that own those facilities, and ask them to share with us their inspection and maintenance records. For the first time, we are being required to actually undertake stormwater pollution prevention planning, the SPE3s that we ask developers to undertake at our own high priority municipal facilities. And there is a lot more. I gave you a list, I think there's 20-something items on that list, and that's just like the first run, this is what we need to do. When the state is saying GPO24001 is a living document, it means that the paper copy I gave to you today, this paper copy, it'll be edited a little slightly for formatting, will be posted on our website by July 3rd as a permit requirement. This document is not a static document. We will create a repository, that's a shared repository in Town Hall, where we can log and track everything that we're doing under the stormwater plan. Over the five-year permit cycle, it is estimated that this new program and everything that it is required could cost between $3 and $4 million. It's a lot of money.
Is that all born upon our taxpayer?
Yes and no. We, you know, as a town, we will apply for grants for some of these larger projects, like the mapping program. The New York State DEC has a specific grant allocated for mapping in relation to the stormwater permit, we're going to submit a grant for that. Will we be funded? I don't know. If we're not funded, we still need to move forward. So I want to speak a little bit about the town's stormwater management team. I know Bob Seoli, who has helped me put this together, he is on the line tonight to help answer any questions. But the stormwater team is really the department heads who handle implementation of all of the six minimum control measures. So it's myself, it's Bob Seoli, the town engineer in his department, it's Bart Carey and the Public Works folks, and it's Ike Cuzio, the superintendent of Recreation and Parks. Each one of these department heads has a responsibility to implement programs and procedures in relation to the MS4 project.
By when?
There are different timeframes. We were required by April 1st to submit our notice of intent.
April 1st, 2025.
April 1st, 2024. You already approved that, we submitted our notice of intent to comply with this permit. The next benchmark timeframe is posting this document on our website, so that the public has an opportunity to review it. There are six-month requirements, which we have already met, because if you recall, we have been implementing this permit for a very long time. The six-month requirements are something that we've already done. We have legislation in our town code to address stormwater and erosion and sediment control to address illicit discharges. There are one-year deadlines, there are three-year deadlines, and there are five-year deadlines. As part of the next steps moving forward, all of the deadlines will be put on a five-year calendar. We will work backward as a stormwater team and identify what we think we can accomplish in what timeframe and what it is going to take. We will look to the 2024 budget cycle and look to create funding streams that you all can consider to help us implement this program, but it is considered a very large unfunded mandate.
Sabrina, can you... Sorry, can you clarify inspections on private property? How does that work? I hear you say that you'll ask private property owners to share their inspection records, but who inspects their property like this? Can you give us a few more details on how that would work practically?
I'm actually going to let Bob answer that.
Thank you, Sabrina. Good evening, Supervisor and members of the board. Right now, before this new implemented 2024 GP, we would just get stormwater plans from private properties. When I say private properties, mainly residential people in town, and they would just build it, and they would be responsible for it in perpetuity on the way the code is written, because the way the code is written now, we only require bonds and agreements and inspection reports from the commercial properties and the major subdivisions. However, with this new law, DEC is requiring us to send each and every one of these property owners, that no matter how small their stormwater is, from a minor rain garden to a full commercial facility, a letter informing them that they have to get inspection reports pretty much on a yearly basis and submit to the town, that we have to document, so we can show to DEC that these are being maintained properly. So this is going to be a big added cost to all the people, residential property owners in town, that have very small stormwater facilities. So it's going to be a big hit on the property owners in town for residential properties, and that's what the DEC wants.
Can you describe for people what that would look like on someone's property?
Stormwater facility?
Stormwater facility on someone's property.
In general, most of the properties that we get in town, I'm just speaking of residential properties, I would say 80%, 90% are all underground. They have inspection ports, they're usually cul techs, they're just underground storage tanks, which pretty much collect the water, infiltrates into the ground based on soil testing. I would say most of the SWPs I reviewed over the past, since 2007, use that type of method. More and more, of late, over the past year or two, I've seen more and more people use rain gardens, which are basically smaller fire retention basins. It's basically something cut out into the ground, where the water goes into, sits, infiltrates into the ground, and goes into a mechanism. So regardless of what type of stormwater facility you have, albeit a underground system, which no one really sees, it's covered over, topsoiled and seeded, or an open area such as a rain garden, which is vegetated and landscaped, those are typical types of stormwater facilities that I see on all the stormwater reports that come in that we review in the town of Newcastle.
I also think it's important to note where we can send communication to the property owners that we have on file, where we know that they have a stormwater practice on their properties. We can ask them to submit to us documentation for that year of what they've been doing, and to give us assurance that it's working. We are required, as an MS4, if they do not provide us the documentation, to either do the inspection ourself, or to enforce that they take care of it.
That's my question, the enforcement question. If we have to take care of it ourselves, do we charge it back to the resident, and then if we have to enforce it, do we have to enact local legislation to do so?
The law for private property owners, Bob, we don't have it for the private SNCs right now, do we?
No, we may have to change the stormwater regulations to incorporate that. Generally, what we do on the bigger sites is we require them to retain the services of an engineer to do an inspection report, which we require all the time on major subdivisions, before we release the bonds and on commercial properties, just once. Now, again, the biggest, biggest, biggest difference is going to be an added cost to everybody, commercial properties, subdivisions, HOAs, private property owners, they're going to want a yearly inspection report.
But again, we have to enact legislation to enforce it, or there's a mechanism to enforce it in the MS4 legislation?
There's not a mechanism in the MS4 legislation to enforce it. We would need to amend our local legislation to give us the ability to enforce it. The language in the legislation is ensure that it is done.
Is that required?
Create a program, yes, it is required.
The enforcement mechanism? So we are required to amend our local law to include an enforcement provision?
Correct. Well, let's put it this way, there has to be a way to ensure, to satisfy New York State DEC, that we are ensuring them that the stormwater practices are functioning the way they were intended.
What's our penalty? Pardon my cough. What's our penalty?
The penalties, as written in the MS4 regulations, are up to $37,000 per day, or 15 years in jail.
Not the town board, the town board doesn't want to go to jail.
All of them?
Well, let's put it this way, Bob is the stormwater contact, and I am the stormwater program coordinator.
So it means just you guys end up in jail?
I think I'm going to defer to Bob, he's the enforcement hand.
I'll give you my card, Bob.
No, but basically, what we'll have to do is we'll have to prepare a letter, a draft letter, which will have to go to each and every property owner, all of the HOAs, all of the commercial properties, putting them on notice, that they have to provide us with inspection reports. And they'll have to retain their own engineer or landscape architect to do that, which is going to be an added cost, there's no doubt about it. It's going to be a continual, perpetual O and M cost on all of these stormwater management facilities throughout the whole town, from residential properties to commercial, to HOAs, to subdivisions.
What percentage of properties would you guess have some type of a facility?
We're doing that right now, I can't give you a number off the top of my head. Ever since we started doing this, we've been keeping track since 2007 of all the NOIs, which basically is a property owner that has to get a stormwater. So I can't give you a number right now, I'm having Miguel and Terry do that right now, and we'll get a better number.
And we have until the end of the year to identify the inventory. You know, the timeframes are set up where we have X amount of time to create the program, and then implement it by X amount of time.
And when you say that you have to ask for the records, you also have to track whether they provide them and then follow up, so that's very lengthy and intensive.
Correct, and DEC, when I said that this is a live document, DEC wants a copy of all of the inspections to be made a part of the stormwater management plan.
And what we're doing right now, helps Sabrina, Miguel, Terry, everyone, we're developing a spreadsheet, which we're using a compilation of DEC, what Terry has had, and what DAS is doing as well right now. So it's going to be a very formalized spreadsheet, which we're going to keep track of everything, property owners, tax IDs, when it was implemented, who's responsible, the Speedy's general parent, number of the NOI, the NLT. So it's going to be a very comprehensive document, to Sabrina's point, it's a live living document, which will be continually updated, and will have to be shown and demonstrated to DEC that we're doing this.
And is there a timeframe for when we'll have to have this development of the septic inspection? It says residents are going to have to prove that they've had their septic pumped every five years, but is...
Once every five years, so...
Right, but when are we expected to start collecting proof?
As soon as we develop the program and figure out how we're going to do it.
And when are we expected to have the program developed?
We are meeting on a every-two-week basis, moving forward, so that we can understand what needs to be done, by what timeframes, attach a budget to it, and understand how we're going to get it done.
There is a July 3rd deadline, right?
The July... The July 3rd deadline is to post our plan online. The plan is not intended to have everything in it right now, it's to identify all of the responsibilities as reflected under the permit, identify how we are going to approach it.
Sabrina, can you remind me, how many municipalities are affected?
Oh my gosh.
Large of Hudson watershed.
In the East of Hudson watershed, there's 19 municipalities, or 18 municipalities, and Putnam County. In Westchester, there's 43 municipalities.
So one of the preliminary conversations that Sabrina has had with staff is the idea that, you know, we are not alone in this position of just having this tremendous unfunded mandate presented to us, because let's be clear, the notice of intent to sign on to this permit, although they asked us, there was no, no, we couldn't say no. We were required to sign on, as was everybody else. So one of the things that we will be doing is trying to figure out how we work with other municipalities that are in the same situation we are, and come up with some sort of programs that will be able to track septic systems, there's going to be an informational component, you know, maybe we'll be able to join with either the county or with other communities and figure out with this East of Hudson community, how we come up with joint solutions that make economic sense to everybody, because everyone is faced with this tremendous unfunded mandate. But on the bright side, we are not alone, and so that's a lot of municipalities clamoring that this was thrust upon them, and, you know, how do we pay for it?
Is there any reason to think that there might be a legal challenge? I mean, I'm not one for unfunded mandates, and I can't imagine that there are municipalities that have the $3 to $5 million in their budget, is there a reason to think that there might be legal challenge to this?
It's possible, but I mean, first of all, you'd have to have multiple municipalities participating in it. Probably, ultimately, I'm just guessing, you know, my instinct is it wouldn't be successful because of the state's interest in providing clean drinking water for the public, probably would not, you know, prevail. The imposition of cost to the municipality would probably not override the state's interest. The state does have the ability to impose taxes and legislation restrictions in areas where there's a legitimate public interest. So I would, I mean, sure, it would be possible to research the challenge and provide a, you know, provide at least an opinion about this likelihood of success, but I would imagine that you'd want to have as much participation from other municipalities as possible.
I guess this leads me to a Rob question. How would you handle this in the budget, regarding budget lines?
It's going to be very difficult. The numbers that Sabrina provided would probably make it so that we would not standard the tax cap at some point in the next five years. And I don't know, I'd have to see the different implementation timelines, but I can't possibly see adding $4 million to this budget. see adding four million dollars to this budget over five years, and that's just for this compliance alone. And we're talking about, this is just, these inspections and this monitoring is just one part of this. I mean, there's the increased responsibility to, we have to street sweep twice a year, the entire town, we have to inspect catch basins twice a year, these are things that we're not able to do once a year for the entire town. You know, it's what, maybe, what do we get to them, every two years or three years that we cycle through all of them?
Right.
So it's, it's very difficult, now they're asking us to inspect them twice in a year. That's going to bring a whole new staff. We will need a new staff to do this. We will need a staff to send out these letters, to monitor these, these inspection reports, to track this, to prepare this report, so.
Right, just to-
And to be clear, this came, this didn't come from our state legislature, it came from the DEC?
Correct.
So that's via, indirectly from the governor, not, it wasn't as if it was voted upon by the legislature?
No, I don't think so. I want to re-
I just want to, I just want to follow up, I just want to finish up with, with Rob, just one more follow-up question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think it would be a good idea to create a separate budget line for MS4? Just so that everyone sees how these costs are-
So we, we have budget lines currently set up for, there have been some costs associated with it on an annual basis, nothing.
To this extent?
To this extent, but more than likely, we'd create an entire department within the budget or even a fund for this. I'd have to talk to auditors, I'd have to, I don't even know the full extent of what this is going to be. In the conversations I've had with Sabrina and Bob so far, it definitely looks like it's going to entail more staff.
And equipment.
More equipment, and whatever other costs, I'm not certain right now.
Right, because when that budget goes up, I just want to be very clear about what the drivers are, and I, you know, I think it would be a good idea to segregate these costs as much as possible, so that we can pinpoint it and show it, if ever down the line, there are major advocacy actions. We just want to have all our numbers and statistics readily available.
Yeah, and I don't know-
I just, I just cannot see this happening. This is the biggest government overreach I have ever seen, and we're all in favor of clean water and conservation practices. I mean, all of the goals are certainly commendable, but this is the most outrageous governmental overreach I've ever, ever heard of.
I don't know if there's an opportunity-
In terms of, you know, small government and unfunded mandates.
Right.
And the imposition on private, private owners as well, it's not just our costs, I mean, they're going to have engineering costs, inspection costs, on top of paying higher taxes.
Yeah, that's-
It's absolutely tremendous.
That's correct, as well as, it's going to make it difficult for probably most municipalities to standard the tax cap as well, if they have to comply with this. As a, as part of this, I don't know if we would have any outreach to our elected officials to inquire as to any exemptions from the tax cap. You know, the school districts are permitted exemptions for capital projects, municipalities never were, but perhaps this is a time to revisit that. You know, we're locked in at a 2% tax increase while inflation has been over that amount for the last two years, so that, that makes it difficult for us to keep up with costs.
I think we should explore that, Rob, to see if we can drive some change in Albany on this.
The other thing I just want to bounce by the board is that, you know, Westchester County does something very interesting. Every, once every three years, if you're in the Sawmill Sewer District but you have a septic, they reimburse you to take and pump out your septic, and it's a far less painful way to get compliance. There's a carrot as opposed to a stick.
Yep.
And I think that there are ways that the state could, and the DEC could, make compliance a lot less painful for the municipalities by being creative with carrots, as opposed to thirty-seven thousand dollar a day and fifteen-year fines. And I think maybe it should be a two-pronged approach, certainly asking the legislature for an exemption for stormwater costs, but perhaps also asking them to be creative about the way they can help us fund this.
Well, when Albany chooses not to work with local districts and municipalities and enforce mandates upon us, this is, these are the results, right? When you don't take into account how something like this is going to affect the people that live here, we end up with this. I'm beside myself, I'm with Vicki, I, hey, this is governmental overreach like I have never seen.
Whatever it may be, it's not tenable, and we have to speak with Pete and Chris to figure out a way to either get us the dollars or exempt us.
Right. I, I think we do have to begin with the advocacy efforts at this point. I will reach out to other superintendents from the affected municipalities, and I'm surprised we're not hearing a lot more outrage and talk about this. I'm truly surprised. I think people have just not, I, people realize, but I think it hasn't hit home yet, quite how onerous and overreaching this is.
You mean other municipalities, Vicki?
Right, other municipalities, and I guess I haven't heard enough of an uproar, and it hasn't reached levels of the media where we're reading about this and having the public understand really what's, what's out there and what's going to hit their pocketbooks pretty soon.
There has been some discussion at the East of Hudson Group, the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation, they have been handling one of the minimum control measure requirements under post-construction stormwater management practices. They handle what's known as the retrofit program for us. We have joined with the other east of Hudson municipalities to embrace what's called umbrella compliance, and that's basically all getting credit for a project within our watershed because we've joined together. We have talked about it and are continuing to talk about it at those meetings, but though, the people at those meetings are not the real decision-makers for the municipalities. Some are, some are not, and it really needs to happen at a forum where the municipalities can get together and join together. You know, when the 2008 permit came out, Westchester County really worked with the municipalities to help with public education. You know, they created education programs, et cetera, you know, putting pressure on the county to help us. They're perfectly situated to help us with the education as well as the mapping, you know, for all the municipalities. So, you know, there's different, different practices, different programs, different policies and requirements that different entities can handle easier than other entities. You know, we are a fairly large municipality with a lot of infrastructure, you know, both myself, Bob Cioli, Bart, Ike, we're all very knowledgeable in stormwater impacts. Other municipalities do not have the level of staffing or as large a government, much smaller land area, not as much infrastructure, so they really don't have the responsibilities or understand what their responsibilities are.
Well, there's a lot more to this, I, we don't have time to cover everything tonight. We could certainly put it on the agenda again, we certainly will be, and so we have, you know, we have some other topics to cover tonight. So if everybody is okay with this, and Sabrina is done with, you know, you're done with the presentation for now.
Yep.
We'll be moving on, but there's certainly much more that's left to be said about this. So I thank you, Sabrina, for putting all this together, and really mostly for doing all of the other background work, you and Bob and everyone else who's involved in this entire process. And we will, I'm sure you'll keep us updated, we will talk about this again.
Yeah, I envision the next time you'll be talking about is when we start talking about the budget.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night, all.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, good night, good night. And now, we will be moving on, we are happy to post our town committee, the Beautification Advisory Board, we'll be having a joint meeting with them, and we are very excited to hear about them, we'll let them come and do, and get seated. No, it looks like we have, okay.
Nobody's allergic to peanuts, right? Jen, you're not allergic to peanuts, right? I'm just having trail mix.
Someone's bag.
I thought you brought some for everyone. No, it's okay, I'm only playing.
I know you're always hungry.
Okay, welcome all. So nice to have you here.
So far away.
I want to recognize the B A B chair, Lori Morton. Thank you for arranging for this, Lori, and thank you all for preparing your presentation for us. I will let everyone introduce themselves, and you can have the floor and begin after the introductions. And I'm Vicki Tip, your town supervisor, as you know.
Jen Klein, town councilwoman.
Jeremy Solan, town board member.
Holly McCall, town board member. Ally Schumtop.
Town board member?
Yep, and liaison to the B A B.
That's right, our valued liaison.
Thank you, Lori.
Lauren, could you put up our slide deck?
Yep. Committee members should introduce themselves as well.
We will get there, it's helpful to use the slide with the names on it as we do that.
Excellent.
So you can see the names and the faces together. Terrific, if you could go to the next slide. Great, thanks so much. So I'm Lori Morton, recently appointed chair of the B A B. On this slide, I have our members, I'll let our other members that are present today introduce themselves, but this slide can be helpful because you can see how long people's tenure on the B A B have been.
Hello, my name is Mike Leder. I've been a resident of Chappaqua for nine years. I want to just highlight and start off that I came to Chappaqua for many reasons, one of which is it's a beautiful location to live in, and I want to start by saying that it is a very beautiful location, and I love living here, and I figured by joining this team, it's a way to give back.
Hi, I'm Catherine O'Connor, and I've been on the board for the past four years. I've been a resident of Chappaqua for the last 10 years, and of Westchester for about 25 years, and that's it.
My name is Elaine Brick Cabot. I am a resident of Chappaqua for 41 years, and I wanted to get more involved with the town and give back, and during the day, I'm a matrimonial lawyer, and my offices are in Chappaqua, and because of Ally Schumtop and all her wonderful work, I thought that this would be a, an excellent committee to spend some time with.
We have, we have some additional members that aren't able to join us this evening, they are listed on the slide. Of course, we are thrilled to have Ally as our town board liaison, and, and of course, thrilled to have Dennis Corelli as our staff, town staff liaison, and a wonderful collaboration with them both. We have currently seven members of the B A B. We feel like, you know, and we are currently recruiting for additional members, and we think it's helpful for the B A B to have eight to 10 members, really for the simple practical aspect of staffing, Cleanup Day, and just, just having, having enough members to staff the information tables for that, for that event, give us a little bit of wiggle room for people being out of, you know, members being out of town. So that's kind of the reason, but of course, you know, having as many voices at the table, having, having as many people to brainstorm with is also, is also really wonderful, so we are continuing to recruit and hope that, hope that we add some, some more members to the B A B. I also want to point out some of our key collaborators for, for the work that the B A B tries to put in place for the town are perhaps, you know, in addition to our great collaboration with the town, we really highly value our collaboration with the Chappaqua Garden Club. We do get, we have some garden club members who are B A B members, there are a number of garden club members who have a lot of insight on, on plantings and, but they also do a lot of the hands-on work to actually plant the planters in the town, and also for the winter greenery, collect all of the greenery materials and make those arrangements and place those as well. And so that's, that's really an essential collaboration for the B A B. And then, of course, we get a lot of support from Parks and Recreation, a lot of hands-on support from Parks and Recreation, in particular, the watering. You know, we just, we're in the midst of a heat wave at the moment, and I see them in the morning out watering the hanging baskets and keeping everything looking really, really great, because it only takes one afternoon for, you know, for all the beautiful plantings to turn to dust. And then, of course, they help with our, the black planters and storing them in the wintertime, and helping us manage our order receiving and these kinds of things. And they are also kind of working with the garden club to help them get what they need to do the plantings, and then, of course, we've also gotten support, we also get support from our Department of Public Works. I think they're helpful around the Cleanup Day pickup and some other support, I think they've also helped with some installations for holiday lights in the past. So if we go to the next slide, so we have, together as a board, updated, you know, what we might consider the mission statement summary for the B A B, and so after this meeting, you know, we'd like this to be updated on the town website, really to more accurately reflect the current activities of the B A B. There are some things that have been listed on the website that are more legacy projects for the B A B that aren't really active activities right now, so, so with this, I'm going to get into each of these things, but I just wanted to point out that we would like to, you know, with the, with the board's support for this, for this mission, I'll get into the details shortly, update this mission statement. Okay, so, so now I'm just going to give a little detail on, if we could go to the next slide, on some of our activities that are incorporated in that, in that mission statement. You know, in terms of recent updates, in April, we hosted Cleanup Day, which is really kind of the kickoff for a Cleanup Month, which goes on for the full month of May, and excited to report that the town staff picked up nearly three-quarters a ton of orange-bagged garbage that was collected by our Newcastle resident, residents and volunteers. So I think that's, that's quite phenomenal. I don't know that I have that data over time to see how it compares, but let's just be happy with three-quarters ton of garbage removed from, removed from all our beautiful spaces in Newcastle.
That's impressive, or scary at the same time that there's not much trash.
It's a mix, I know, I know that perhaps it's already been replaced with new garbage, I hope that's not the case, but our town staff is also regularly on, on pickup duty for our key areas, and they do actually a really beautiful job of keeping our major spaces clear, and I think that this is where residents, you know, get to kind of tackle those spaces in their neighborhoods, you know, on a roadside that, you know, that bug them, and do something about it. So if we go to the next slide, this may be, you know, the next, the next two, two slides, I think, are, you know, some of the activities that folks may be also quite familiar with. The B A B partners with Dennis, our environmental coordinator, and our vendors to choose our plantings each year and submit the bid, partnering with the garden club, as I mentioned earlier, to plant our plants, and New York Parks and Rec to help, you know, kind of maintain everything, put soil in the pots, deliver the plants, help keep everything watered, store our winter, store our planters in the winter, and really kind of keep everything- store our winter, store our planters in the winter and really kind of keep everything maintained. So in, we have a spring planting. And I've shown on this slide, in the first kind of four panel, two different variations of how we've done the spring planting. For a number of years, we've done pansies. And there, you know, they, by the time they actually grow up, it's kind of time to move to our May, you know, spring, summer flowers. Last year, we did an experiment, which I'm a big fan of. And the garden club planted bulbs in all the planters in the fall. And when they came up in the spring last year, they were really, really gorgeous. And those are the two left, most leftward bottom panels. We would like, I think, to transition to that because I think we really get the biggest bang for our buck taking that approach. And it makes for really, you know, dramatic display that is season appropriate. By the time these are all kind of petering out, it is time to move to our summer plantings anyway. So that's something I just wanted to flag for the board because that means an expenditure this year, this fall, to enable, you know, that spring color in the next spring, 2025. So come out of this year's expenditures. And then in the middle panels, I have some of our summer flowers, both the hanging pots and the planters. And then in the fall, we also partner with Parks to get mums that end up being our fall color and really try and time it, the time when those those summer flowers, you know, have, are also kind of at their fried-out end and we're ready for fall. And this planting usually gets done a week or two prior to Community Day and the Book Festival. And so the garden club and the town do a really great job getting that all in place when we're really doing our September, October celebrations. On our list, wish list in this area is that some of our concrete pots have kind of algae growing on them or some of them have some mold growing on them. And perhaps, you know, it would be great if we could get them power washed once a year or something like that to keep them looking fresh. And then for the winter, we have our greenery displays. Now, this is limited to the concrete planters, the permanent and concrete planters in the town. Because at this point, oh, sorry, yeah, we got it. Thank you, Lauren. Because at this point, when we're starting to expect winter weather, the black metal planters get safely stored away so they don't get damaged by snow and snow blowing. And so we're just limited to the concrete planters in town. So that's what gets a display of winter greenery. Again, that is product of volunteer work by the Chappaqua Garden Club. And some of our budget going to support that a little bit. But a lot of what goes into those planters are like donated clippings that the garden club collects in one of our members' Mary Lynn's driveway in November or so. One of the things we see as an opportunity is perhaps to add concrete planters, you know, some permanent planters at the Esplanade area in Chappaqua so that we can have something there to have, you know, some decorative feature that's year-round. So as we think about, you know, potential opportunities to expand what we do, I think that could be a good one. If you could go to the next slide.
Can you just, sorry.
Yeah.
When you say Esplanade, what area is that?
Sorry, I mean like the corner of 120 and Greeley Avenue.
Thanks.
Remember from the streetscape. Okay. So now, next slide. Okay, so then, so then one of the other, I think, really, you know, popular elements that falls under the B A B's purview is the winter lighting. The town staff install the snowflakes. And then we have been working in the past with a combination between town staff and the vendor staff. And I think last year, moving more toward, more fully toward vendor lighting. And in particular, I just wanted to point out kind of the difference because if you look at the top right, the two right panels, that is Station Drive in Millwood. And the one to the far right is 2023. And the one in the middle is 2024. Really feel like making that investment to go with professional lighting in Millwood and making that transition had, I think, a really positive impact. It looked really beautiful. And so I just want to thank, we want to thank the town board for making that investment in Millwood. One of the things that we care deeply about is trying to make things as equal as possible between Chappaqua and Millwood, and this is a space where I think we can continue to improve. And so, you know, so I just have highlighted on here, you know, what we think are some more winter lighting opportunities in Millwood because we do have, you know, the poles, but there isn't a wrapped tree in Millwood. For example, we have a really, you know, exquisite and dramatic display in Chappaqua. You know, really trying to think about how we could achieve something like that in Millwood. And I'll get into more detail on that in a moment, but just in brief, you know, we have been talking, again, we're also collaborating with other boards, talking to the Millwood West End Advisory Board about what they would be interested in as well. And they're thinking that perhaps we can put lighting on the fence along Millwood Park. We have some thoughts about how to create or identify a tree that could be wrapped. And we have gotten feedback from the Millwood West End Advisory Board that they'd like to see kind of a continuous stretch of light poles that kind of go fully around the corner because there's lights on the first part of Station Drive and then it gets a little broken up a bit. And then there's, then all the posts are, once you get by Millwood Plaza, then there's every post again. And so, you know, they'd like to see something more even or continuous. That's feedback that we've gotten from them. You know, one of the other ideas that we have been talking about is that, I know there was an attempt in the past to wrap trees, this is again not Millwood, but Chappaqua, to wrap trees at the corner of 120 and 117 where we have those beautiful magnolia trees where it would look extraordinary, I think. The challenge there is there's no power at that corner park. Again, we're talking about Chappaqua, near Walgreens, near Chappaqua Fire Station. There's that corner park where there's a sidewalk and, you know, where the Memorial Parade kicks off each year. But that could be another opportunity for tree lighting if there were power. We've been talking about this issue a bit because one of the other interesting aspects of that park is that because of the heavy tree cover there and the sidewalk, it's very, very dark on that sidewalk at night. And so there may be some synergy between bringing some power there to provide some security lighting that might also enable the possibility in the future of enhanced holiday lighting or I should say, winter lighting at that part of town as well. Again, I'm going to kind of fly through some of these major points and then we can have some discussion at the end. It's just helpful, I think, to kind of get it all through. One of the other things that the B A B is charged with is managing our Memorial Bench program. And that is a partnership with the town that was initially created as a fundraiser for the B A B. Of course, a great opportunity to remember and recognize individuals as they're not all in memoriam. Many of them are in honor. And, you know, so at the end of this presentation, we have some questions about this program. You know, we have a number of new members in the B A B. I am new to this role. There isn't a whole lot of clarity for me about how this is all supposed to work and what you need from the B A B to manage this program, you know, how it's evolving over time. One of the things that we would like to see is as much as possible some continuity in the style of bench that we use and the size of the plaque that we use. We're starting to see, you know, folks want to have as big a plaque as possible. And, you know, we want to respect the, you know, the previous people who have, you know, created or purchased benches in the past and then, you know, kind of avoid situations where there's discontent over relative sizes of plaques. We'd like to keep that as consistent as possible. Bench is as consistent as possible, I think, but I also appreciate, we also appreciate that, you know, the availability of things changes over the years. And there, you know, and the look that the town may be going for changes over the years. This all evolves. And so what that leads to is actually like kind of a mix of benches in the community. If we can think about what we have where to have some continuity for spaces, that would be great too. Anyway. And then, and then how the finances of this program are, you know, how that is meant to work. If it is still a fundraiser for the B A B, how do we, how do we manage that? And we'll get back to that at the end because we just, you know, we'd just like to understand the program better. We do have social media accounts for the B A B that we've had in place for a number of years. There's a Facebook page and an Instagram page for the B A B. And really there, the content consists entirely of photos of B A B projects and our partners' beautification projects, photos in the community and that really reflect beautiful Newcastle and beautiful spaces in the community. Promotion of Cleanup Day, of course. And we do some cross-promotion of collaborator content, particularly for some of the boards where we have active collaborations and feel like the content's in the spirit of what we're trying to achieve together. So like garden club has its plant sale each year. We try and help promote that. You know, the Trees for Trips programming and, you know, the Conservation Board looking for volunteers to help plant saplings, you know, that's the kind of thing that we would cross, try and help cross-promote. And these pages are maintained by me. I have had co-editors that whoever the current chair was at the time could also help manage that content. So then this next section is, you know, things that we're recognizing as board. There's a number of people who have, you know, who have newly joined the board who, and I'm sure everyone in this room has got a space that kind of bugs them and things that we think could be better. And so that's in that spirit right here. These are, these are opportunities for us to think about. Maybe some of them are rather low-hanging fruit. Maybe some of them are, some of them are more challenging. Some of them may be very, quite challenging to address. But these are things that we have, you know, been discussing as a group and feel like there's opportunity for improvement there. And this first slide is really dedicated to, you know, what one might consider welcome to town. And where, you know, where we have spaces that are at the entries to Newcastle and, you know, where we might improve them. In particular are, you know, welcome to Newcastle signs. The one in Millwood actually is looking quite good, but it is crowded by invasive plants. The welcome to Newcastle signs, some of them have, many of them have, you know, posts and signs themselves that are covered with algae and mold and they could really use, you know, a bit of a power wash. Also, you know, even our Chappaqua, that, you know, again, this is going to be perhaps outside the domain of the town board, but I don't know how else we get these things sorted, like just that even the Chappaqua sign on the Sawmill is like dented and falling over. And, you know, so if we can be thinking about those entry spaces into the community and how we can try and keep them looking fresh. One of the other areas of opportunity have been some of our traffic islands in town.
Well, I will, I will just add, the welcome to Newcastle signs are actually very nice. It just requires annual upkeep. And you'll see there on the left, it's an example of a sign that just needs to be power washed. That's it. So that falls in the spectrum of the easy. Recognizing that we're speaking to the town board, the more difficult, obviously, would probably be the sign on the Sawmill since I've been here, it's looked like it's falling over. And whether it's individuals who live locally or traveling through from Maine, they're seeing a crooked Chappaqua sign. So if we could do something with that, that would be great. In addition to that, you'll see signs with graffiti on it that we pass by every single day. Of course, these signs in most cases are the responsibility of the state, but it would be great if there's something that we can do to fix that as well.
Thank you, Michael. So then moving to some of our traffic island spaces, I have included pictures of some of them here. It should be in the, you know, you can zoom in on this closer in the deck that I shared with the town board. Where, you know, our, in many cases, our triangle spaces are maintained, but they really need an update to the plantings. I know that there's a priority, right, to maintain visibility on the roadways. And we don't want to have plantings that obstruct visibility. And that, I think, is why perhaps we take quite an aggressive pruning approach to them. I know this year, you know, there are rose bushes at the corner of 117 and 120 that got like mowed down to stalks before they bloomed even. And so it's looking like we're punishing the things that are growing on the islands. And perhaps we need to rethink the plant selections there where we can come up with things that are low maintenance, you know, low water requirement, native plants, pollinator plants that can, you know, that are, that are short, that can just be let to grow there. I have been paying attention to this quite a bit lately and driving to the entrance, you know, the Eagle Entrance, for example, into Armonk is beautifully landscaped with native plants that are all low-growing plants. White Plains has got some really beautiful plantings on their traffic islands. Mount Kisco also does a really nice job on their traffic islands. So I think it's an issue not necessarily of a massive expenditure, but a rethinking of the landscaping there and changing plants out for something that is lower maintenance, doesn't require the pruning and can just be let to grow and be attractive.
Lori, where are those? Where, those three pictures right there?
Yeah.
Where are those?
So, okay, so there's the long strip there is Roine Brook Road leading to the Sawmill, that stretch leading to the Sawmill. It's a very narrow kind of rumble strip that heads to the Sawmill there that I think, Michael, you were saying was planted in the past.
No, yes, so this, this may be the state, I'm not sure, but this is where the construction was done just last year. And the plantings that went in are actually very nice. There's just no one taking care of them and it looks like a bunch of weeds at the moment.
So that is that spot. The one all the way to the left is 1217, no, sorry. That is on 120 and Mill River Road or 120 and Hunts Place, depending on how you think about that intersection.
Okay.
And then the one to the right of that, there is 12117. And then the other two pictures are Town Hall where we have some really beautiful plantings that, you know, that have been updated in recent years. Our, you know, our honor and memorial, our COVID gardens that are, you know, on the Town Hall front lawn. The plantings around the flagpoles are really lovely. I know that, you know, there's reasons for lots of things. And we know that a lot of what we're talking about here, there are reasons. We're just trying to get through the content first and then we can talk more deeply about specific examples. But that, you know, it would be, it would be really nice to kind of move from our temporary lot to something that is more polished at Town Hall. Again, one of our welcome to town spaces for sure. And, you know, and I know that town staff have been also working on some of the big plantings that are near that temporary lot to try and keep that under control. But it could also use, you know, I think, a landscaping update. Millwood presents, you know, a different challenge, I know, because our triangle sign is, our quote, you know, triangle sign in Millwood is on private property that, you know, that is collaboration with the town. Right to, right adjacent to it though is kind of a half-dead, a giant half-dead tree. Again, that's the welcome that we have to Millwood there. And then our Millwood sign that is on Route 100 is beautiful and mostly clean and it's a pretty spot, but it's really, there are some high-quality plantings around that sign that are all overgrown with invasive plants. And so it needs some help. So then we can move to the next slide. This is again kind of a mix of different issues that, you know, that perhaps we can tackle. Some more challenging than others. That our memorial circle at the train station could use a refresh of the landscaping or an enhancement of the hardscaping there. You know, chronic issue of graffiti under the bridge. One of the things I want to point out in one of the later slides is really our desire to collaborate with other boards who are thinking about how we use these spaces. And so the B A B would like to be collaborator with Arts and Culture Committee as they think about art spaces in Newcastle. Like to be part of that conversation, working together. At Marion Place, the garbage cans there are kind of out of control and do chronically look overloaded. I was actually over there yesterday morning and it was a little odd because two of them were totally empty and then the other one was like overflowing. So I don't know what's going on there, but there's a big garbage situation and so they need more capacity. Or there's some other, something else, some other enforcement issue that we need to, need to. need to work on there.
And potentially provide a shelter for the garbage that's more appealing than these big blue bins, but the frequency is just clearly not enough.
One that, you know, that is everybody, I think, is that has their thing that bugs me for me. For me, it is this garbage can, duck pond, bridge, you know, this waterfall is one of the most gorgeous spaces in our town. And in the middle of that picture is this awful rusted vandalized garbage can. And we can do better than this. We can put a different garbage can. We shouldn't have a garbage can in that area. There's picnic tables that are to the left of this where people presumably might picnic, but there's no garbage can at the picnic tables. It's here in the midst of this, what would otherwise be a gorgeous vista in, in the town. So that doesn't cost anything, I think, to just move the garbage can. We have been noticing that our Route 120 railings on our, on our beautiful sidewalk along Route 120 are starting to show their age and we're seeing peeling paint on them and dented, you know, some that are dented and, you know, they, they could use a touch-up. I know this is an issue that has long troubled board members. So, and I think that since, since your heroic work some years ago on this topic, we need to get back on the job for double poles in the community. Douglas Road in particular has double pole at every, just about every pole. And so that's something I know that the Town Board can help influence and we would love to see that.
Under threat of legislation, for those who do not know, they at one point fixed some of them, but then-
Yeah. It was a lot of work though. I know that it was a lot of work on your part to try and make that-
So we had an intern, I think, who, who went and actually single-handedly or looked and found, counted them, yeah. Not while she was here.
So you had an intern that moved telephone poles? That's really productive. That's a great intern. Okay.
I just want to say something. There, there, there's so many really great things to talk about and please go through all of it. I just want to, you know, just a time management point is that we have our meeting that starts in 10 minutes.
Okay.
So that just, you know, so I really want to get through all this because it's-
Okay, we're almost-
It's really important and-
We're almost there and then hopefully we can have a few minutes for discussion.
Yes.
We do have an interest in zombie properties. You know, each of them has their own story. One of our board members, Michael, is interested in working with Town Staff to be thinking, to just really try and understand each of those properties and whether there are ones that we can do something about or put some pressure on individual property owners to at least improve the aesthetics of them. So that's something that we are interested in, but we, we won't necessarily go down that road today. Genny Park, gorgeous, the gardens there are really quite beautiful. You know, the algae in the pond is, is, uh, it's, it's kind of neon green right now. And, you know, we, we wonder, as I'm sure others do too, whether there's something we can do to improve the water flow at that pond and then of course open discussion-
It's essentially a carpet at the moment.
Jill, when we put that in like half a dozen years ago?
Okay. So then we can move to the next slide. There are things that we are thinking about in terms of new projects. As I mentioned earlier, you know, how can we, how can we get some more balance for the winter lighting in Millwood and mentioned some of those options for, to think about that. Additional planter locate, locations in Millwood, we appreciate that. In Millwood, the challenge is, you know, where do we have town-owned property that we can do something on? Planters, we would, you know, also be interested in potentially adding concrete planters in, at this, you know, kind of town square spot in the center of Chapiqua that could stay around year-long. I talked about some of the holiday lighting issues already, partnering with Arts and Culture on murals and, and we continue to, you know, improve our partnership with other boards on multiple issues. One of the things that we have been talking about is perhaps after Cleanup Day, have an invasive species day like the following week in partnership with the Conservation Board so that the invasive plants can also go into orange bags because that's kind of how they're meant to be disposed of is in the trash and not in the chipper. And that might be a way to help the Conservation Board educate the community about invasive plants and facilitate some volunteer work there that doesn't necessarily interfere or compete with Cleanup Day. Okay, next slide. Okay. We've been thinking about where we might be able to put a rap tree in Millwood. There's this spot that is to the right of the entry to Millwood Park that looks like an overgrown corner, but actually in there, in the midst of invasive plants is a actually nicely shaped crabapple tree. And I think it may be worthwhile to try and clean that small area around to reveal that tree. It is, I think, town property, is proximal to some power. It's not a huge tree at the moment, but, but it could make, you know, really lovely feature whether it was just a beautiful, healthy flowering tree with the potential add-on benefit of, of perhaps being able to light it up in the wintertime. There's some other possibilities in Millwood. There are some, there are some trees on the other side of Millwood Park closer to Rockies. If we chose to light some of the trees and shrubbery around that corner of Millwood, it might look like those lights belong to Rockies, not necessarily the town, so it's a, it's a consideration. Next slide. And then, and then of course, there's always a possibility of just planting a tree in a space and perhaps we could do that in a space that is straightforward collaborator with Newcastle, whether that is, you know, a new tree at the corner of Station Road and Route 100 or perhaps on the county property near, you know, there's a big kind of open stretch there at the entrance to the, to the county, North County Trailway. That could be an opportunity to put in a tree that might also have lighting near it. So those are just some other thoughts that, that could create one of those opportunities. Let's move on. Next slide. Okay. And so, so we wanted to close with some questions for discussion. The budget for the B A B is $25,000. You know, the new board members and me as the new chair, you know, still trying to understand, well, we kind of understand where the money goes, right? I just showed you where the money goes. The, you know, essentially the full budget of the B A B goes toward those plantings that I just illustrated in the lighting in the wintertime. And so really have, and I, and I think that parts of REC may also, you know, supplement a little bit in the fall, at least for the months, I think that they cover the cost for that. And so really is not a lot of latitude for the B A B to explore new ideas without partnership with the Town Board to achieve that. And then it also really, you know, can limit what we're able to contribute as B A B members. You know, if the, if the, really the extent of our decision-making is do we do pink flowers or do we add some crazy blue flowers this year? You know, it doesn't, it's not, it's not so demanding of, I think, creativity that people are capable of on the board and the enthusiasm that people have for really trying to look toward improvements. And so, you know, so one thing to consider is whether it makes sense to roll recurring costs into the town budget and perhaps reserve a B A B budget that is intended for new things instead of copy-paste things year after year. And then, and then we had questions about, you know, what some of our, our more veteran members have called the B A B trust that had been, that comes from the sale, has come from the sale of the memorial benches, not really understanding whether that, you know, whether that still exists, whether that changed when the funding for the B A B was increased and, and if we were interested in using it to make some capital improvements, how would we go about doing that? And so, so I think I will pause there, get some thoughts from the board with a couple minutes to go and perhaps try and get some clarity on our finances. At least as it pertains to the trust.
Yeah, so Lori, with the budget, oh, sorry, Jill, is that you?
No, go ahead.
Oh. With, with the budget, I completely get your point because these are initiatives that we're going to do regardless. And so the question is, what bucket do we put the money in? Right now it's been put in the bucket of the B A B. And so it's really a question of whether we can increase our overall budget, I think is the, is the real question. Because either way, that money's going to be spent. I would love to have, to give the B A B leeway to engage in new projects, but it, that's going to have to be a broader budgetary question that we address for, for next year. But I think that it's, it's a very interesting point and I'd like to explore how we can do that. And in terms of what, sorry, what was the next follow-on question?
I think the second point that we hope to talk about was to get some, some clarity on the trust.
On the trust, I think that we will have to do, we may have to do that at a separate meeting, perhaps get our lawyer to take a look at what that, what the documents are. I've had, I have not seen them myself. I don't know if they're actually trust documents, but I think we'll have to look at how that trust was established and, you know, analyze it again.
Vicki, it's Rob. I, I can see you, I don't know if you can see me. Just to comment a little bit on that and, and we can talk about it further. Number one, the budget, it's not a, necessarily a B A B line. It, it falls under the Town Board's discretion, under their budget. And this is actually a good time to have this discussion, Lori, as you probably remember, the budget process will begin in August, late August, early September. That would be a great time for you guys to put some numbers to some of these projects that you're suggesting and we can incorporate it. So, you know, that's not to say you'll get everything you ask for, but that's the time to ask for it so we can start to include it in the, in the budget for the next year. Going back to the trust and, and I'll just try, try to give a, a brief, maybe one-minute summary of this. It's not a, a trust per se, it's a, it is classified in accounting terms as an expendable trust. And basically what we used to do, the B A B line used to be $500, if anybody remembers back prior to Rob Greenstein being elected. And he increased that to $25,000 and the Town Board, every subsequent Town Board has maintained it at $25,000. Back when it was 500, I think you would, I saw, I went back to 2010, there were different donations from like Michel A, maybe, and different merchants in the area and they wanted hanging baskets when the town didn't do that. So that really kind of went away when, I, I guess, when the Town Board added $25,000 to the budget. There are funds in there now and we can possibly talk about where they go. So the, the bench program has been kind of all over the place for the last, I don't know, 15 years or so since I followed it. Some of the requests come through the B A B, some have come directly through REC, some have come directly through Jill. And why there's a balance in this trust account right now is all of the bench funds went into the trust and they were paid for out of a different line. So there really shouldn't be any money in there right now, but there is. So we can talk about that another day and maybe how we can allocate some of that money to some of the projects that you're suggesting. Going forward, there's not necessarily a trust. I don't recall and, and some of the people that were on the board before, Phyllis Fornari, she predated me, so I don't know what the original intent of taking donations in. I did not believe that the benches were a fundraiser necessarily. I thought they were a kind of a one-in-one-out. We didn't necessarily charge exactly itemized because sometimes the plaques, depending on their size or what they said or availability, availability of benches from the vendors changed. So it wasn't a one-for-one cost, but it, it wasn't, I didn't think meant for a fundraiser. So hopefully that gives you a little bit of clarity. I know we kind of have to move on, but-
Yeah, that's okay. I appreciate that, Rob. And, and if there's additional questions, we can follow up that-
Yeah. And, you know, you can talk with me as we get closer to the budget process in August and, and work with Dennis. I work well with Dennis, you guys work well with Dennis. He can help you kind of, some of this stuff would have to fall under our procurement policy, but he's very familiar with that. And if you guys can put some numbers to some of these projects, when we get in front of the board to do the tentative budget, we can include some of these numbers and see if the board is, is interested including in the 2025 budget.
That's really helpful, Rob. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Can I just ask one question?
And these are, these are great questions. We'll take them offline and follow up. Okay. Sorry, Holly, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you, you had a lot of, you know, wishlist types of things. Have you given any thought to like the relative rankings of them on your wishlist?
Well, I mean, some of the things there, right, are, are housekeeping and maintenance issues that shouldn't necessarily need to be prioritized, right? They're really, they're really issues of, you know, where we have the staff time and resources to fix the problem. I think in terms of expenditures, you know, enhancing the lighting in Millwood, I think is, has been a recurring priority of the board. You know, and then second to that, you know, can we, can we increase the number of concrete planters in town so that we can have more year-round displays or, you know, larger displays and something that looks a little bit more formidable than our, than our black boxes?
That's helpful, thanks.
Anything else that, that our members would wanted to bring up about this?
I'm sorry, yes. Would it help if we organized what we would like to do in terms of housekeeping, projects that we would like and put numbers on them? How would it help the board to get all of these tasks done? I mean, I, I believe that it has to be assigned to people. So if the housekeeping, it should be assigned to maybe certain people in the town so that we know that it gets done. And, you know, what we want to do and what we want to purchase, we can put, we could put a line item in for that. But how would it help the board to get these things actually done from us? What, what do we need to provide to you?
I think that's a great question. I think some of the, and I want to thank you guys because I think that was an amazing presentation, very thorough and very thoughtful. You obviously put a lot of time and effort into it and it was, I appreciate it. I think the housekeeping items like the algae on the planters and the rusted railings, those are housekeeping things. We should be doing that. That shouldn't really be the B A B's responsibility and I'm glad that you're pointing it out. So I think it would be helpful if you could separate some of those types of things that we should just be doing anyway. And then I think, like Rob said, since we're talking budgets, now would be a good time to have a, you know, one or two pie in the sky ideas and then maybe one or two that maybe are a little bit more tangible, short-term with some long-term projects. That's just me personally, how it would be helpful for me to understand future goals and objectives for the B A B. I don't know if anybody else wants to jump in.
I think you're, I, I agree with you about kind of taking the housekeeping list out and probably going to Jill and she can figure out where it goes to get taken care of. So you guys can more focus on, you know, where, where do you go next and what can we add and improve?
How do you recommend we manage those issues?
I think that would be very helpful, but to a certain extent, you've been the eyes and ears, or the eyes rather, of the things that should be getting done, that aren't getting done by the town. So that's, that's very helpful.
And how do we manage? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's helpful if you come up with information.
Will do. How do we manage those issues that require someone to facilitate a discussion with the state? So where we don't actually have the ability to make a change with the state would. Okay. Awesome.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you all so much for the time. We really appreciate the forum.
Lori, I want to thank you for your leadership as well.
I just wanted to let you know that this was a fantastic presentation. It was really thorough and for anyone who's wondering what the B A B does, this certainly gave them a really good idea. Thank you for putting all the time that you did into this and for all the really beautiful, lovely work that you do. And I really appreciate the Equity for Millwood focus and Millwood has looked beautiful with the holiday lighting as it does now. So I, I just want to say a great big thank you for all the work you've put into this and for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to feel you guys in my mom's house. I actually want to be better than I expected. They don't need to take the name of place in my house. I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted. They, they were able to clean everything. She'll be back on her feet tomorrow, but she's looking at a full year of antibiotics.
Oh, wow.
I guess that's better than Elton.
Get on the probiotics.
Better, so much better. Like we'll know more in two months. It's going to take like two months for us to know if like she's on the right track. So she's not completely out of the woods, but this is way better.
Yeah.
Not, not today.
Huge, oh my God.
She was like, how are they going to get in and out of the car? I was like, you're not even going to be leaving the house. But I didn't want to tell her that.
Okay, so is the, do we have our Town Staff getting seated?
Almost.
Almost there. So I'll, I'll just start talking, our next topic, and we'll try to go quickly through the next two topics. One is a- One is, the agenda says residency requirement. This is a requirement to participate in REC and parks programs. This issue began with the realization that there had been a mistake. We have town of Mount Pleasant residents who go to the C C S D district who are non-residents and were being treated as residents when enrolling in programs. And that had not been the town policy. And this was discovered quite by accident because of parking policy, but I won't get into all those details. At some point, the REC and parks department attempted to correct that right before summer camp enrollment, which created quite an uproar. And I ask that the status quo be, be held in place until we can figure out a policy and a way to perhaps increase accessibility to town programs. We went back and forth quite a bit, but I think that the town of Mount Pleasant residents will be very happy with where we are ending up tonight. After going back and forth and considering all variables and all factors, we have decided that ultimately, this is a question of community. We have residents who go to the Chapacua Central School District, who have always felt part of this community. The school district, they, their address says Chapacua, so some of them did not even realize that they were in the town of Mount Pleasant. So, we have decided at the end of the day to treat all of residents who live in the Chapacua Central School District as town residents when it comes to enrollment. However, they will be in a category of non-residents when it comes to fees. So, they will be charged higher fees to account for the fact that they are not taxpayers in this town. But after considering all factors and all that we heard through public comment, we, we came to the conclusion that the, the sense of community here was most important to us. I want to say that some of the comments we received that were negative were actually not helpful and they really hampered the process, but we, we got a lot of really heartfelt comments about people who participate in activities in our Memorial Day Parade and volunteer with us. And so, we felt that this was the best result. And we have some language to go with that, that we can look at. But I'll open it up to other town board members to see if you have anything further to add that you'd like to express.
I just want to say, I want to echo all of Vicky's words. We spent a lot of time thinking about this, mulling this over. We listened to so many different residents. We understand the original way that this was announced was wrong. We heard you and we worked on it and I think that this is the best possible solution. So, thank you for those residents that came to the meetings, that wrote emails, that sent texts. I, I appreciate it and we're looking forward to moving forward.
The only, the only thing I would add is just that I, I still hope that we can work on trying to increase capacity because I'd rather not have anybody on a waitlist for a program like the camp. So, that doesn't mean we're, we've abandoned that either.
That's right.
Oh, naturally not, no, definitely not.
I'll just very briefly say.
And I should add that we, oh, sorry, Jeremy.
No problem.
You may raise the issue that I was going to add.
Do you want to go ahead? Go ahead, Vicky, I'll, I'll wait.
I did want to add that one thing we would like to look at is changing the registration, the actual nuts and bolts of the registration process to make it easier for working parents who don't have necessarily the time to devote to sit and wait for the window to open when it's especially on a workday. So, we will try to address those kinds of inequities and, and make it easier for everyone.
That, that was my, my point and concern, so you've just said it, thank you.
Okay, so we, we provided some language and.
Jill, do you want me to read it, Vicky, or you're going to read it?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Jill.
Okay. So, for the purpose of registration for Town of Newcastle recreation programs, a resident is a person who is a property owner or renter of property located in the Town of Newcastle, as well as a person who resides in the Chapacua Central School District. For the purpose of fees, a Newcastle resident is a person who is a property owner or renter of property in the Town of Newcastle that pays Town of Newcastle taxes. People residing in the Chapacua Central School District who do not pay Town of Newcastle property taxes will pay as non-residents.
So, as long as the language is good with our legal counsel. Received any comments from any board members about the language? Does anyone see any, any problem with the, the way it's worded?
Vicky, also just to let you know, the language has been circulated to the recommission as well? With no comment?
Oh, good, yeah, absolutely. No comment from there either. Yeah. Does counsel have any comments?
I believe we had, I just checked with, with Jill and we had taken a look at the language in advance, so we have no further comments.
Okay, very good. Jill, is this on our resolutions for tonight or are we going to, to hold that in until our next meeting?
I don't know that it requires a resolution per se. We will, if, if this is what the board wants to go with, then we would take and put it on our website.
Okay.
It will be on recre, on the recreation website to try to clarify as best as we can and.
Very well done.
Okay, okay, great. So, can we go to the next item, which is the honorary street naming policy?
Yeah.
So, what we've done is we've basically mirrored Austinings' street naming program policy, except with the change that ours would be as a memoriam, not an honorarium. So, it would be for someone who has passed. It was our hope that the first street naming would be for Mr. Lang on Bullion.
Yes. This was an idea that was born out of, you know, in honor of Mr. Richard Lang, who passed during April, a very beloved residence who touched a lot of lives in town. And we wanted to do something special to remember him and so we wanted to have an honorary street name for him, which is not the same as a legal change, which would require residents to do, to do a lot. So, this would be an honorary street name. And before doing so, we need a policy and so this is what we are discussing today. So, is, does anyone have any comments on the policy as, as written? Let me try to get it up here.
So, the, the policy requires that there be a statement in support of the, of the street naming. That would be evaluated by our town historian, Gray Williams, who has very graciously agreed to fill in that role in Newcastle as well.
And then it would be followed by a public hearing?
Exactly right.
Right. Right. So, just so everyone knows, understands the whole process, you would fill out an application and give a, give a, an overview of the honorary's life, their connection with the proposed streets and their contributions to the town, which would then be given to the town administrator, who would then presented to the town board and it would go to the town historian and then there would be a public hearing. So, those are the few, few steps. Any comments from board members?
No.
Nope.
No?
No. It sounds like a wonderful idea.
Well, it looks like a thorough, but yet simple process, Jill.
Right.
I think that it's appropriate. I like the role of the town historian and I think this is what we wanted.
If the board has no objection, it is on the consent agenda for this evening to approve the policy.
Okay.
I just am going to go through the administrative items.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Go right in.
Sure.
I'm just looking at number seven in the honorary street name, where it says denial of an application might be appropriate if it might bring disrepute. Is there any process to un-name a street if something were to come up later?
No, obviously not, because, you know, this is, this would be the whole of our policy for now. We've never had a policy like this and it's not addressed here, but I don't really want to get bogged down in that if something were to occur, we, I don't think we need a policy necessarily to undo it.
Yeah, okay. I just.
Yeah. I agree. I don't, I don't think there needs to be a, a, a policy of record. I think if something like that were to come up, there could be, you know, a special resolution stating the, the circumstances and applying and, and, you know, changing the name.
Okay, so there's a mechanism to do it. Thank you.
Okay. The administrative items, just to let the board know, we had received a request for the installation of a stop sign at Amsterdam Park, where it meets Hoag's Cross Road. Chief agreed with the recommendation and determined that because the stop sign is placed on town property, actually within the confines of Amsterdam Park, that we didn't need a public hearing. So, the stop sign has already been installed in anticipation of the start of camp, so, you know, great job all around. We have a retroactive payment of claims, adoption of minutes and monthly reports. We've got an authorization to approve Simon Securities. There was a public comment on this and a response by the chief of police. Does the board have any further questions?
No.
Okay. There was an authorization to extend the 2024 iWork service agreement, which is a program that DPW uses to track its work programs. There's a street opening permit bond release. The work was done to the satisfaction of the, of the Department of Public Works. We've got authorization to attend a conference for the police. We've got authorization for the town supervisor to sign a letter of support for climate smart community spending. Sabrina has done a Herculean task of putting together five different, Sabrina, you want to talk about it?
Sure.
Just to go briefly? I'm sorry, I know where we're at, but this is really special. Go ahead.
It's actually Clean Energy Communities. We received five different grants from NYSERTA for accomplishing some high-impact actions. The Sustainability Advisory Board, as well as the Climate Smart Task, Climate Smart Task Force have really helped the town reach its high level of Silver Certification. We keep going and keep achieving higher, higher-impact actions, gaining points, which resulted in $302,500 in funding for as-of-right projects that we can use in town. There's five projects we're looking at. We're looking at installation of solar at the CHAPAC on this roof. We are looking at purchase of an electric vehicle to be used by the electrician in DPW to replace an existing gasoline-powered truck. We are looking to, a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about the charging situation in the Allen Street parking lot. Well, we can use this money to pay for that, so we will get a replacement charger plus an additional charger in the Allen Street parking lot. We also are looking at purchase of an electric lawnmower. And then the last thing we were looking at is purchase of a heat pump for the multipurpose room on the second floor at Amsterdam. So, all of those projects will most likely be paid for out of that C E C monies. And in order to apply for the grants, we need the supervisor to sign a letter, a letter of support committing us to doing those projects.
So, pretty spectacular. The last two, thank you, Sabrina.
Sure.
The last two items are establishment of a capital project and budget for a 2024 large dump and then the actual authorization to purchase that dump.
Okay.
And with that, that's the extent of the, our agenda for the work session, supervisor.
Very good, thank you, thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the work session and open up the town board meeting. You have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, okay. So, we are now at our town board meeting, so welcome again, everyone, to the June 25th, 2024 town board meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. This is the call to order. I will skip, Jill, do you have any announcements for this part of the meeting?
No, I'll, I'll hold them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I will skip my supervisor's report, hold it to the newsletter for tomorrow. And we will start with the presentation of Eagle Scouts. I'm assuming that they are all here, is that right? I can't, can't really see from my vantage point.
We, we have some of them.
Yep.
You want them to come on up?
So, it, it's a challenge to be on screen when everyone is on, on the stage. I can't really see reactions and I think there are delays, so.
Okay, here they come.
You'll have to forgive me for, for these fits and starts. So, I just first want to say how proud we are of our Eagle Scouts. You know, it takes a lot to be an Eagle Scout and there aren't very many in the U.S., but somehow here we always seem to have a, a bunch coming up every year. And so, this year we are so proud to recognize five of them. And so, what I'd like to do is you can all come up together or you can call up, why don't you all come up and stand near the stage together and I'll say a few words about each of you. And you can, let's see, there are three today, so, all right, let me see. Tell me who is here. Let, hang on, let me take a look at my notes on who's here.
Use the microphone.
We have.
In attendance, we have Ian Kressman, Advait Hugahali and Luke Montana.
Okay. So, I'll start with them. Ian Kressman. Ian joined Cub Scouts when he moved to Chapacua in the first grade and then joined Boy Scout Chapacua Troop Two in the sixth grade. And his project was for a children's book drive. And what he did was he collected over 5,000 children's books from families across Newcastle through a children's book drive. And books were distributed to local food agencies, 914 CARES, which will stock a new library for families in need, as well as Darian Book Aid, which distributes books to under-resourced communities across the nation and the world. And furthermore, we recognize your overall exemplary service to the Scouts of America and to Troop Number Two. So, now we have Advait Hugahali, is that right? Who's here?
That's correct, that's correct.
So, you started in the Cub Scouts in fourth grade and you've been with Troop Two since the fifth grade. And your Eagle project was Project Adventure Revitalization. And you, Advait has, let me see, cleared off, laid new trails, cleared off stations, rails and placed trail markers with maps and did other revitalizations of trails. So, we recognize you for your exemplary service to Scouts of America and Troop Number Two. And who is the third person?
Luke Montana.
Luke Montana. Luke started as a Cub Scout in 2014 and worked his way up to Eagle Scout in 2024. And his Eagle project was with the First Congregational Church with a fence installation. So, Luke built a new fence and installed new split rails and a gate line mesh for safety all around a nursery, school, playground at the First Congregational Church. So, we recognize him for his overall exemplary service to the Scouts of America and to Troop Number Two. And for the other Scouts, we have Nicholas Kressman, who joined Cub Scouts in first grade and moved to Troop Number Two in the sixth grade. His Eagle project was a youth voter registration drive. He educated around 400. He educated around 400 students about youth voter registration by giving presentations about the importance of voting and how to preregister in New York, and by running booths to provide students with necessary resources to preregister. And so that's a great project, as are all the others, and we recognize your overall exemplary service to Scouts of America and Troop Number Two. And the last Eagle Scout is Teddy Eaton, who started scouting in the second grade and moved to Troop Two from Cub Scouts. His Eagle project was sustainability education in Newcastle. He collected educational videos to teach people about the environment and focused on major aspects of sustainability such as recycling, water conservation, and renewable energy resources. So we recognize, Teddy, we recognize you for your overall exemplary service to Scouts of America and Troop Number Two. So congratulations to all of the troops, and we would like to take your picture. Jill, are you able to take their picture with the town board members? So I would ask the town board members to come up.
Sure, we're gonna let Christina do it because we'd like the picture to come out.
Yeah, maybe the troops might want to go on the stage.
Yeah.
Go on the stage, you can get.
Take your picture.
Congratulations.
Okay, and next on our agenda is a general public comment on new business. This is for public, other public comments. So anyone having public comments at this time, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself, state your name and address. Okay, seeing that there are no public comments, we will move on to the public hearing on the Indian Brook, Crotin, George Watershed Protection Overlay District, which we are continuing from June 11th of this year. May I have a motion to open the public hearing? And a second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, as you, as you've heard from the last meeting, this is a partnership among five municipalities, Cortland, Newcastle, Austining, both town and village, and Croton on Hudson, and it's to manage the watershed district and the area to protect drinking water and our natural resources. So first, I'd like to turn this over to our legal counsel to establish some ground rules for this hearing, and then we'll move on.
Yes, thank you, supervisor. Yes, so I just wanted to remind everybody here of the, the ground rules for the public comment portion of the, of the hearing. We'd ask that members of the public address their comments to the board members only. This will not be a question-and-answer session. We will ask that you, if you pose any, any questions or any comments that need clarification, the board will be taking notes and address any clarifications that they deem necessary at the end of the public session. So please don't direct any questions to board members or town administration. We will respond to any clarifications that need to be made at the end, and please address your, all comments to the board members themselves. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I would also like to recognize an honored guest that we have in the audience. I would like to welcome the Town of Austining supervisor, Elizabeth Feldman. So thank you so much for, for being with us tonight. We really appreciate your presence. Hello.
Hi, how is everybody tonight? Thank you so much for inviting me and for having me. I don't know how many of you know it, but I grew up in the T-Town area, one door away from Newcastle, in 86 acres of woods, which unfortunately is now 86 acres of condominiums. So I am a huge proponent of protecting this particular area. The T-Town, the greater T-Town area is, is my childhood home, so it really means a lot to me. I want to thank you for looking at this overlay district. It has been 20 years in the making. I was looking at some of the earlier documents earlier on today. It is literally 20 years of a collaboration between, as the supervisor said, Cortland, Newcastle, Town of Austining, Village of Austining, and Croton, to protect the water of 44,000 residents, many of whom who are financially challenged. It is one of the few very fresh, pure water sources left. I know some of the eastern parts of our county have a lot of PFAS challenges, and it's costing them millions of dollars to, or probably going to be billions in the end, to address with filtration with the problems that they're having. One of the reasons I'm in office is actually to protect this area. I, I think that having a water source of our own is invaluable and irreplaceable. I think the next wars are going to be fought over access to water. I think that we have something very special. So in talking with some of the residents that I have grown close to and, you know, combating or talking about one project or another over the decades, I found out that some of them were unhappy with this idea, and, and I really didn't understand why, because after so many years of trying to protect and preserve the T-Town and greater T-Town areas, I would think that they would think this was a gift. They've spent so many years of legal fees and battles trying to preserve the ecology and the environment in this area, I was surprised to learn that some of them had some concerns. So I learned that some of the concerns were to do with, they didn't realize that anything they have is grandfathered, and they wouldn't have to replace it with anything else but in-kind. You know, I know that some of the challenges are to, you know, pump the septic system every three years instead of every five years, but it seemed like a small cost compared to, you know, the threat of, you know, what else could come. I, I think that, and, and somebody said that they were worried about the valuation of their home going down, and to me, to be in an area that was preserved and environmentally protected would increase the value. I know that I would pay more to live in an area that I knew wasn't going to have the, the dense development that the area that I grew up in ended up with, with the, with the many sets of condos. Anyway, let's see, what else? Anyway, I just wanted to thank you for looking at it, and I will say that this watershed is not only for Austining. Having this watershed and the water available to the residents of Austining helps them save a little bit of money and helps the people who really can't afford the water just a little bit not having to buy it from New York City. So having our own source independent of the Croton Aqueduct has been a real gift, and it is a very pure source, and we appreciate that. Oh, I had another point. Oh, and I forgot, it's a backup source of water for Newcastle as well. So we have a connection over by Route 100, kind of North State Road area, where, God forbid, anything happens to Newcastle's water, we would be able to provide water to Newcastle also, so it is also a backup source for the Newcastle residents should your system ever have a challenge. Okay, and thank you again for considering protecting this area for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you for being with us tonight. So before we start taking other comments, Sabrina, is there another overview you'd like to provide?
I can provide an overview. I believe that everybody in the watershed was mailed a deeper dive in comparison of the watershed overlay district to the Newcastle Town Code, and there's a, a select few areas where the wording is different, where our code may not be as, as strict, if that's the right word, as the overlay is protecting. But in general, again, I think that after a closer look, it's fair to say that the overlay protection district was really oriented off of Newcastle's codes and the other municipalities coming up to our standards. I do know that the, the other municipalities involved, the Town of Cortland has adopted the overlay protection district. They have several hundred parcels, couple hundred parcels in the watershed, and the Austinings and Croton on Hudson are considering it as you are considering it right now as well.
Okay, very good. The other thing I would add is, just so people know, the town board does not intend on voting on this tonight, and we will be keeping public comment open until our next meeting. I just want to say that in advance. So if we can start with the first comment, did, are there index cards for people to write their names?
Yes, there are.
Okay, and has that started? And people, whoever wants to make a comment, can you please write your name on the index card for purposes of our records? And, and then please come up and I, you know, pass the cards around. Maybe someone else from the town board could facilitate this, since I'm not there, to get the cards. Jeremy, deputy supervisor, will you do that?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
Although my voice is.
You can call out the name, and, you know, call.
Jeremy, I can do that for you.
And call out the names when you get the cards.
Vicky, I don't know if you can see, but right now Christina's handing out the index cards for people to write.
First one, Ms. Edwards? Okay, can we get the first one, at least, so we could get started?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. I have, there's a lot of questions. There are so many different points on your list of things that we have to take a look at and consider. So I have just one quick question, and that question is about desalting our driveways, and I want to make sure I have this correct, that we have to use a minimum amount of salt to desalt our driveway after an ice storm or a bad snowstorm? Is that correct?
Again, we're not going to be conducting a question-and-answer session. If you have concerns or questions, please raise them, and then we will, we will address any clarifications that we, that we deem necessary at the end of the public comment.
Okay, well, if that is one of the points, which I think it is, many of us, I don't know how many of you have been to the west end of Newcastle, but we, it, it is very woodsy, as you probably know, where it's like living in the country, and a lot of us have difficult driveways, and if we can't put salt down on our road, driveways, we won't get our gas companies up the driveway, we won't get our own cars up and down the driveway, we could easily fall and hurt ourselves and have accidents. So, you know, this is one of my major problems. You also mentioned something about animals and feces and urine, and I'm not really clear on that. If we have an animal, or animals, I mean, what of it? You know, we clean up after them. As far as cleaning our septic tanks, we do that every two, three years, usually every two years. But again, if we have to submit proof or show an inspector that has been done, that's the part that is, you know, we don't like. So that's, I'm gonna leave it at that. You know, I do want to mention that we're very close to the Sunshine House, and the Sunshine House has, I'm sure, a pretty decent-sized staff that works there, and I often wonder, what are they doing? Are they conserving water while they're working there? Are they following, abiding by all of these rules that you want to put forth, so that we need to abide by? And that's something, too, that's a little bit of a, a stickler, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Thank you.
And that's Alapartis Road, just for the record, thank you. Bruce Topman from Glendale Road, please. Evening.
I sent in a comment letter, and I asked four questions, and I assumed the council's response is directed to me not to ask those questions.
It was, it was directed to everyone, sir.
Okay, so I won't repeat the questions, but they're on the record, and they're basically about the boundary. How you got it, what's the basis for it, who determined it. Up to you guys if you don't think it's important to answer it. I can't make you answer it, of course.
You can, you can state what your concerns are, we're just simply not doing back-and-forth Q and A. We may address things after the public comment, so you're free to make your comments.
Okay, thanks. I misunderstood. My only point was this, the entire proposal rests on a foundation of what is the right boundary, or is there a right boundary? So apparently this started in 2007, but I don't think anybody knows how it got started, what government agency has said this is the right boundary, what government agency has said this is the scientific, environmental stuff that supports this boundary? So that's my question. And is the boundary, even if it was good in 2007, is it good now? We got a sunshine place up there that's 140,000 new square feet of building with more residents and everything. Is it right, good, or not good anymore? I don't know. Those are my thoughts about that. I'm not inquiring, I'm just, those are the things I raised, and it's up to you guys to think about it. On the activities under the buffer, I looked at the chart. So one of the things that's prohibited is additional lawns. I couldn't find that anywhere in Section 137. Impervious services are prohibited. Couldn't find that language anywhere in the statute. And agricultural livestock are prohibited, but it says existing activities of farmers are permitted elsewhere. So I'm a little confused about the buffer idea, how it actually translates to today's and then what exists now. But the more important point to me is, these are not prohibited activities under the section that exists today. There are no such prohibited activities, as simple as that. What they are is, they are regular activities, meaning if you want to do one of those activities, you have a permit, you show why in your particular circumstance it's not harmful and should be permitted, and then it's reviewed for environmental concerns. That makes sense to me, because we have lots of environmental situations. Somebody wants to build a new building, they file an environmental impact statement, and that's what the existing law does. Section 137 doesn't prohibit anything. It simply regulates things with a permission for permits, and that makes more sense. I think last time I said, look, if somebody wants to build a walkway because they're old and they have to walk from their driveway to their house, they can't walk on a lawn, they need a smoother, flatter surface. They should be able to come to you all and say, look, here's my circumstance, I'm not gonna hurt anything, and if I don't have it, I'm gonna hurt me. A permit system permits that. A prohibition, prohibition does not, and it just doesn't sound fair to me, and it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, right? Because the existing law says permit, it doesn't say prohibit. One other thing about the water source, and I, I confess my ignorance here, but that we get our water source, we being Newcastle, I don't understand enough about this to be, to make a sensible comment, but I'll read you what I got from Newcastle's own Water Resource Report of 2023, and then everybody can just decide what it means. It says, the Newcastle Water System depends It says, "The Newcastle Water System depends upon the New York City Aqueduct and Reservoir Systems for its entire raw water supply. Newcastle's primary source is the Catskill Aqueduct System fed by the Ashokan Reservoir, and its secondary source is the New Croton Aqueduct fed by the Croton Reservoir System." And then it says we prefer some other, one of those two systems. Now, as I said, to me, that doesn't say anything about Osning, that we get our water or could get our water from Osning. We get our water from where we get it, and the only people involved in this thing at all are the 133 people, 103 people who do wells. But I may misread it, I don't know. I defer to the experts here on this one. I think that's it. Thanks for listening, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eddie Claridge, Glendale Road. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple of questions. First of all, has there been a, any demonstration that there has been any degradation in water quality over the past number of years? I realize you can't answer that at the moment, but I would like to know. Um, you know, it, it seems that this is just more overlays of more regulations, and yes, that does hurt property values in the end. And, um, I'm not sure if there's a legal requirement for Newcastle to follow the other towns. I think the board and the town owes their property owners and their citizens sort of a first priority. We don't get any use of this water. There's really no benefit to any of the people, um, in this district that I can see. And I haven't heard, other than this woman, I don't remember your name, from Osning, I haven't heard anybody say anything, not one person say, we are in favor of this. And, you know, I don't know, just if everybody else says no, unless there's a particular reason to ignore the people who have a concern who are in this district, I don't understand why the board can't hear and understand the word enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other people who wanted to offer any comment? No one else here, Vicky, in person?
No one? Okay. Um, so, you know, I want to ask for clarity, Sabrina, if you have it, and not to narrow in on you, zero in on you necessarily, but regarding the desalting of driveways, is there-
I don't, Madam Supervisor, I don't have the regulation in front of me tonight, um, but I can tell you that there's provisions in the legislation that stand in the way of safety, right? So it, it's a matter of not over-salting. I'd have to look at the language and clarify before I actually give a full response. I'm sorry?
Yes, understood. I do recall that in the language, that it does provide for safety.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Meaning that it would be permissible for safety reasons?
Yes.
Yes.
Sabrina, some clarity too. Uh, I think Mr. Topman asked a question, I, I just want help from clarity. It's, and a fair question, to make sure it's interpreted properly, there is a difference, whether it's applicable here in Portland, everyone has asthma, so my voice comes in and out, um, for, um, a prohibition as opposed to a regulation.
That is true.
So are there scenarios where certain conduct would be prohibited, no matter whether there was an adverse, I'll use the term, health impact?
So, so, so there's, there's, this overlay district, particularly in regards to the buffer, um, has things that, Mr. Topman identified correctly, there's a permissible versus a prohibition. The overlay district is a prohibition, but there is a pattern and a response by the boards that issued the permits in relation to buffer activity in Newcastle, the Environmental Review Board, the Planning Board. They are very reluctant to allow impervious surfaces and, um, other disturbing activities within a buffer today. It is something that is done at a board level and by different approvals, and it is true, it is, is a permissible process, but unless there is an extenuating circumstance, and I think the example of the walkway is an extenuating circumstance, but they would have to prove what that walkway would be made of, what are any mitigation factors in order to place a walkway in the buffer.
And it's solely within the buffer, not the entire district?
What do you mean?
Like, so the entire watershed-
There's different distances in the watershed overlay districts, district from a water body, which is consistent with the current, um, depth of buffer that we currently regulate.
Okay, and before we get into any more questions, there is one hand raised online. So let's take that person. Uh, Karen Wells, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Karen Wells. I, um, live actually in the town of Cortland, but I'm also here representing the Greater T-Town Defense Alliance, which includes people who live in Newcastle in addition to the other communities. Generally, well, I guess I'll, I'll answer a question that was raised about salting of driveways. While there is a safety provision in the current language, the judgment for that safety provision has been kept with a staff member within the town of Newcastle. So it is not up to, the way it is written currently, it is not up to the homeowner to make that safety decision. So that, that is, and I understand why people are concerned about that. I know our driveway is very steep, it's very long, and as, as one of the community members mentioned, if we do not salt it, probably more than, um, a, someone sitting not in our community would see, if we do not salt it properly, we cannot get fuel delivered during the winter. But getting back to general comments, um, during the work session, there was a discussion about, um, state and county programs that would provide carrots for, in the form of support for folks who needed to do things such as pumping out septic tanks. I think one of the things that is frustrating community members from what I have heard, that the overlay district is being put in place without any positive support coming into the community. I know, for example, a number of people have mentioned the Sunshine Home as, um, an issue in the community. And as an example there, a substantial amount of dollars were put into a tree fund, as far as I understand. None of those dollars were spent in the community where that facility was built. Along the lines of the type of permit that was used for the Sunshine Home facility. The Sunshine Home facility was put in place under a special use permit. I know in the town of Cortland, the special use permits that would impair an ecologically sensitive area were reviewed, and many of them were taken off the books because they felt they were no longer appropriate. And in some ways, taking those special use permits off the books will longer term have a more substantial positive impact in protecting the watershed we're talking about. So I encourage the town of Newcastle to not only look at the comments from tonight, but also consider looking at the special use permits that are allowed in this area. For example, given the courts, court decisions around the state road and access that is on Newcastle's criteria for a hospital in this area, that would still be allowed within this overlay district. So I appreciate the effort of the community members coming out, I appreciate the board notifying folks and taking these comments. I do feel there is more work that needs to be done. Along those lines, another aspect that I have heard is frustrated people, not only in Newcastle, but in other areas, is that this concept was put in place without actually involving anyone who lives in this area. Overall, I, I do believe there's language inherent, though it has passed in Cortland, that needs to be reviewed, needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have another hand raised. Joanne Landau, good evening.
Uh, good evening, thank you. I'm on, uh-
Oh. Okay.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm on two Alapartis, uh, Not Road, Alapartis Circle, uh, so I'm not totally clear whether I'm, you know, contained in this overlay, but either way, there is, um, the, the area is subject to, um, sort of special zoning, if you, special zones, I should say. First, thank you for, um, I know at the last meeting you had mentioned, um, that the voting was going to occur, and so we certainly appreciate that, um, the situation has changed and that, um, you've sort of taken folks' thoughts into account. Um, and, um, you know, other people have said it, it would certainly make sense to see how Osning goes, and if, I forget, I think there's one more, before anything gets taken, um, on a vote for Newcastle. And, and my comment remains the same that I, I made in the last meeting, which is that, um, to the extent that a lot of these decisions in many ways do end up within departments, and Karen Wells sort of alluded to that with regard to the salt, um, uh, you know, I'm in a situation about like, you know, should the grass be replaced with wildflowers, you know, you, these kind of things that are a little sort of, um, you know, they're extreme and they're, um, uh, you know, very specialized. I mean, I sit on an EPA board, I sit on a, a county water board, I sit on, you know, I used to be chair of T-Town. I mean, we all have this kind of expertise, and at the end of the day, when these decisions have to be made, there, there's usually no black or white, and they're very gray. And because Newcastle has a sort of fair amount of regulation on this already, I don't understand why, you know, um, people would want to make the lives of, of everyone really more complex. Um, it, it seems to me we would want to go in the other direction of simplifying, and this only makes something more complex, um, in an area that really has quite a lot of wonderful water. Some people were talking about going into Indian Brook in the last, um, session, so that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any other hands online? Any other hands up? No? Okay. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask if Supervisor Feldman is still in the audience, if there's anything else that she might like to say before we close out the public, adjourn the public hearing. Or not?
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay, there she is. I see you now.
Hi, um, so I definitely hear you. I, my impression on the salt was, you know, to safety, you know, and using a little bit of sand, you know, in addition to the salt, might be an addition that, you know, helped the situation. But of course, safety comes first, and I don't think there are any regulations that, um, completely stop that. I mean, I was even looking at, you know, even new development is allowed, but with cluster zoning. I mean, there's, there seems to be room for regu, um, planning boards and zoning boards to look at these things. To the person who wanted to know about the, where they got that district from, I asked my planner that, I got that answer, I can give it to you later. But it's a, it's a standard overlay zone by, um, the DEC, I believe it was. It was a defined area by the DEC. Um, that's where they got that. Um, what was the other question? And, oh, and the other thing is, um, not only does this protect the water that gets into the reservoir eventually, but it also protects the drinking water for each and every one of the homes and residences in the area. Um, you know, if your neighbor can't do X, then it will never seep into your well either. So I just wanted to leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, I think that will conclude this public hearing. Anything else to add? Sabrina, Jill, board members? No? Okay, so I'd like a motion to adjourn the public hearing until our next board meeting on July 9th. Is that correct, Jill?
I think, yeah.
We'll be opening up the public hearing at that time? We have two summer meetings-
I would think either August or September.
September, yeah. People are generally not around in the summer.
Supervisor Feldman, do you know what your schedule is for, um, public hearing in Osning?
Yeah, we have it open.
Can you come up to the mic so they can hear you?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem. It's good to meet you.
She's getting her steps in.
No problem. I did want to say that the town board has it open, the village board has it open. We are going to take public comment. We anticipate probably closing it at our next meeting in mid-July, um, and voting soon after. Um, we haven't had any comment, uh, some, any negative comments yet, but we're waiting for people to digest. So we have a lot of smaller parcels and a lot of, uh, and a large parcel, um, that will probably have some comments. But, um, our anticipation is definitely getting it done by August.
Okay, so-
I don't know where Croton is, though. I know town and village are both in favor.
Okay, so Supervisor Tip, I, I don't think I would set this down before our August meeting of August 13th, and we can, at that point, determine how the other communities are, are moving along and see whether or not it's been approved before we take it up again.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. All right, so may I ask the board for motion to adjourn the public hearing until August 13th?
And we will send out a notice again, so if it turns out that, you know, it's still held in abeyance by the other communities, um, you know, we'll send out a notice and let you know whether or not the public hearing is going to be proceeding on the 13th, or whether or not we will be just opening the public hearing to adjourn it again until September. Okay, but we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, we can always send them.
Okay, that's great, so-
Thank you.
To, um, to August 13th. Great.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is adjourned until August 13th. Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments.
Good night, thank you.
We'll move on to our resolution, and thank you so much to Supervisor Feldman for coming to our town and to our town board meeting. Uh, we appreciate having you. All right, so let's start off with our resolutions. Should we start in the regular order? Let's see, how about we start with, uh, Ally? And go down the line.
These ones, right? Yeah. Okay, I'm-
If you're not ready, we could start on the other end.
She's ready.
She's ready. Okay, go ahead.
It's fine, okay, it's fine. Sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. I move to adopt the items one through 10 as listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
I, I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of $1,303,343.20 listed on the summary AP check registered and detailed voucher detail reports dated June 20th, 2024. Checks are printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, June 20th, 2024. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals as seasonal recreation attendants to work 2024 summer camp at the corresponding rates as indicated in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for the position of motor equipment operator within the Department of Public Works Recycling Unit at the annual salary ranging from $61,220.76 to $83,832.58.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to...
Go ahead, Jer.
What'd she say?
What's that, Vicki?
Vicki, what'd you say?
Do you want to continue, Holly? I, I was asking Jeremy to go, to keep going.
We're not going to make Jeremy do it.
You have short of breath.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Holly.
I move to authorize the posting and hiring for grade-two water maintenance worker within the Department of Public Works Water Unit at the annual salary ranging from $61,220.76 to $83,832.58.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to go, Jen?
Sure. I move to authorize the hiring of Thomas Sands for the position of student intern at the Millwood Water Treatment Plan at the hourly rate of $16, effective July 8 through August 23, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Mina Nespoli for the position of student intern at the Millwood Water Treatment Plan at the hourly rate of $16, effective July 1 through July 29, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to extend the internship for Carly Hanifin in the position of student intern within the town clerk's office at the rate of $19.50 per hour, effective July 8 through August 30, 2024.
I'm sorry, Carly's here, by the way. This is Carly.
Yes, I'm looking. I'm giving her a hug.
Intern extraordinaire.
Does she count polls?
Did we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to accept the...
Congratulations, Carly.
Congratulations. I move to accept the retirement of James Gallagher from the position of part-time court attendant, effective June 19, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of James Gallagher for the position of part-time court attend, huh? Court attendant at the hourly rate of $40.50 per hour, effective June 20, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of James Wilson for the position of laborer within the Department of Public Works Highway Unit at the annual salary of $51,246.97, effective July 15, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We were going to go into executive session. There's just two things I need to talk to you guys about.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to figure out how to do this with Vicki.
So should we make a motion?
Okay, hang on a minute. So I retract that, retract the motion. We have a motion to adjourn and to enter into executive session for advice of the council and, what, was that, Jill? Is that a contract we're trying to look at?
Yeah, I know. So we're going to have to go into the conference room. I just don't know how to bring Vicki. Yeah. Vicki, I'm going to end up bringing, putting you on speakerphone. We're going to go into a conference, a conference room to have our executive session. Okay?
So moved. Second.
Okay. For advice of council. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, and have a good evening.